Good evening, welcome to the January twentieth twenty second twenty twenty second twenty twenty two West Sacramento Planning Commission Meeting. We continue to meet via teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision E, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel twenty, streaming online through the city's website and through the Zoom platform. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. All public comments submitted by five P M via email to the Planning Commission clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city website so that all commissioners and community members can see the complete text and submittal information. Members of the public participating via Zoom may also make oral comments during the meeting. The Planning Commission Clerk will note the commenters for each item. With that, we'll proceed with tonight's agenda. First up is election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair for twenty twenty two. So with that, we'll open it up for nominations from from the commissioners for chair. Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks Chair Sablon. Let me start by saying I think you've done a fantastic job over the past year as Chair of the Commission. You and Vice Chair Berliner are the two commissioners with the most experience serving on this commission. So I would move to nominate Vice Chair Berliner to be the new Chair for the upcoming year if she'll accept the nomination.
A nomination for Vice Chair Berliner? Let's see. So quick question, do we do the second first or see if she accepts first?
Either way. If someone, we do need a second.
I'm happy to second that.
Second by Commissioner Escobal.
I accept.
Vice Chair Berliner accepts the nomination. Any other nominations from the floor? Not seeing any hands, so. We'll do a roll call vote? Okay, so. Ms. Flores, can you do the roll call vote?
Yeah, we have Lori Ledesma guest starring tonight from the City Clerk's office and we're very grateful for that because we are kind of shorthanded on folks who can't help run the run the Zoom, so. So Lori, if you're able to do a roll call on that, we appreciate it.
Commissioner Deanda.
Hi.
Commissioner Escobal.
Hi.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Hi.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Hi.
Commissioner Steiger.
Hi.
Vice Chair Berliner.
Hi.
Chair Sablon.
Hi.
Sorry if I mispronounced names. So with that, the once I guess the nomination passes. So I will hand over the virtual gavel to Chair Berliner to conduct the Vice Chair nomination and election.
Thank you and thanks everyone. Um. But with that, do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
All right, this is this is more just a question of order. So once the nomination takes place and it's accepted and it goes through, does that automatically trigger in this first meeting or does it wait until the next meeting?
No, the just like how Commissioner Berliner is now the Chair and will now chair this meeting going forward. Whoever becomes Vice Chair will slide into the Vice Chair role tonight. And then we will just pick up on our normal business going forward from there.
So it was really funny when we were in person because you would actually have people standing up and shifting chairs. But do we have any nominations for Vice Chair? Commissioner Hirsch.
Thank you, Chair Berliner. I really valued a lot of the comments that Commissioner Lockhart made over the past year in here. I think she has a very good grasp of the materials presented in front of us. And again, I've been very impressed by her substantive questions. So if she is interested, I would nominate Commissioner Lockhart as Vice Chair.
I would second.
I completely agree.
I agree too, so yeah.
Well, thank you, this is unexpected and I am so honored to have the support of my colleague and I accept, thank you.
With that, are there any before we open the floor for votes, are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? I'm seeing head shakes, so. With that, Madam Clerk, can you call the can you call the roll?
Commissioner Deanda.
Hi.
Commissioner Escobal.
Heck yes.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Steiger.
Hi.
Commissioner Sablon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lockhart.
Hi, and thank you.
Chair Berliner.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Commissioner Escobal.
No, I just want to say. It's a it's a great honor to have you both. Chair Berliner, you have experience here in the Planning Commission and I'm excited for you to chair. Commissioner Lockhart, man, you have so much great experience and we are so lucky to have you here. We're so lucky to have you be a part of, you know, our Planning Commission, part of our part of our town and you're going to bring so much knowledge with the new position that you that you have inherited and yeah, I'm excited and I just want to thank you all for for serving in these positions, that's all.
Thank you. Um, so moving on to general administration function, part one B, presentations by the public that matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. Um, is there anyone who who wants to speak on something not on the agenda tonight? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Um, moving on to see correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Just briefly, I do, I would also like to commend Commissioner Sablon for being a great Chair during a obviously a very challenging time when so few of us have even been able to meet in person, you know, let alone conduct our business on this platform. So in which appears like we'll be doing that for at least a little while longer, so. I think she did a great job and I'm looking forward to you Chair Berliner. And I'm excited to see Vice Chair Lockhart, you know, move up and assume more of a leadership role. So I think both of you will do a great job this year too. That's all for staff communications this time.
Thank you and yeah, congratulations, awesome job. Commissioner Sablon, sorry, I'm doing this off the cuff, I usually have notes. Moving on to disclosure of expertise communications, does anyone have anything to report or disclose? Okay, seeing none. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from December second twenty twenty one Commission meeting minutes.
I'll go ahead and approve, motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Um. Mr. Tilly, do we need a roll call for this?
Yes, we want to do roll call on all on all votes, given that we're on the Zoom platform.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Deand, Commissioner Deanda.
Hi.
Commissioner Escobal.
Hi.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Hi.
Commissioner Steiger.
Hi.
Commissioner Sablon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lockhart.
Hi.
Chair Berliner.
Hi. Awesome, minutes are passed. Moving on to the regular agenda of finding of general plan consistency for grading activities for the proposed Connect Apartment Project located at twenty three oh one to twenty four fifteen Jefferson Boulevard. Mr. Laffey.
Yes, good evening. This item before you tonight is a general plan consistency finding for a grading permit. The city received a grading permit application last summer to prepare the site at twenty three oh one twenty four fifteen Jefferson Boulevard for a three hundred and twenty-two unit multifamily project. This project site is the southern portion of the vacant field bounded by Jefferson Boulevard, Gateway Drive and Clark'sburg Branch Line Trail, it's right north of Station forty-five. The developer is American Property Development and for the background, for background, they also have developed the Monticello Apartments across the street from this site and the Capital Place Apartments along Sacramento Avenue. This item before you tonight is required, there's a provision in the grading section of the municipal code requires that any grading in excess of either ten acres or twenty thousand cubic yards requires the application be submitted to the Planning Commission to determine whether the proposed grading is consistent with the city's general plan. The proposed grading activities is roughly covers twelve acres and involves approximately seventeen thousand cubic yards of earthwork. Eleven thousand four hundred cubic yards of fill would be needed to be imported to the site, most of which would be needed for preparation of the building foundations. The site is zoned mixed-use neighborhood commercial and is also within the Southport Framework Plan. The grading work is for a project that received design review approval back in twenty nineteen. The item before you tonight is specific to the grading. Staff recommends the commission find the grading is consistent with the general plan as it is as it is to prepare the site for a use that is consistent with the general plan. The applicant has submitted building permit plans for the site and a copy of the latest improvement plan, approved design are provided as attachment to the agenda report. The preliminary plan is for a four-story multifamily building along Jefferson Boulevard and in the interior of the site, four-story multifamily buildings centered around an amenity space for the residents. Staff also recommends the commission find the grading activities are within the scope of the general plan E I R analysis as outlined in the Sequoia Technical Memo provided as attachment, provided as an attachment to the report. This concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions and city staff from development engineering are on the call to answer any technical questions regarding the grading and I see the applicant is also on the call should any questions come up for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey. It looks like Commissioner Deanda has some questions or comments.
Thank you, Chair. I guess it's more of a process question to start. I know this is just about the grading. Will we have an opportunity to see future, I mean, will this project come before us for other aspect in the future?
Not, no, because so this project, it was first submitted in twenty eighteen. That was under a prior zoning code which permitted by right multifamily, this is a multifamily project. So we processed it as a permitted by right project, it went through design review, publicly noticed the surrounding property owners for a design review. And then in twenty twenty, they submitted a modification to their project. The zoning administrator approved the modification that was also noticed to the public surrounding property owners. So the item before you tonight is specific to the grading. Should the Planning Commission approve this request, it would, unless the project changed, it would not come back before the Planning Commission.
I guess I just. I have concerns really about the impact on traffic in that specific area filling out onto Jefferson. You know, the stoplight that's at Monticello is can be a bit of a nightmare at times. I'm wondering, is this going to require another stoplight? Is, you know, either way, it's going to add significant flow on Jefferson in and out of Jefferson. If you have three hundred units. I'm just really concerned about what that does to that section of Jefferson in general, so I don't know if there's no, it's maybe a little outside the scope of the planning commission, but in terms of traffic mitigation and other efforts, it might be nice to have some information around that.
Yeah, and if it helps the commission, the the Sequoia analysis done for this technical memo finding that this grading is within the scope of the general plan. In twenty sixteen, when the City Council approved the general plan and the environmental impact report, they took a statement of overriding considerations on traffic, basically the E I R for the general plan found that traffic impacts would be significant and unavoidable. And the City Council took a statement of overriding consideration, it's basically saying we recognize traffic as an issue, but seeing the general plan being built out, the city built out as called for in the general plan. You know, it's important. So we did look at the developer, staff discussed the signal back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Ultimately, a city, a signal requires City Council approval. And there needs to be a basis for the signal. And as you mentioned, there's our Jefferson Boulevard is a major arterial. So any kind of future signal would potentially, you know, cause more delay. But yeah, access to the site was studied. So part of this project, there will be a driveway connecting onto Gateway Drive. So any anybody who lives at this project site going southbound, they could enter the site off, take the Gateway Drive and they could enter it off of there instead of having to take a U-turn at Lake Washington or unsafe unprotected left in an uncontrolled area right there at the project site.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, I just, I guess it's it's more of a general concern too that I you know, I know there's efforts with bridges and some other efforts, but I guess I I see the growth that's kind of continuing to happen in our city and I know there's a lot more on the horizon, particularly single-family homes. And I haven't actually seen a lot of work at least started on it on any of the traffic issue and it's there, there's I think during COVID, you know, it's been lessened a little bit because you just have fewer people on the roads in general, but prior to that and then at some point in the future, it'll go back and give significant traffic issues within the city and so I hear the desire to stick to the general plan and build out as posed, but I'm not seeing simultaneous attention given to what that means to current residents and traffic and and adequately preparing for that, so I just, I guess I'm just generally skeptical about adding large-scale projects without ensuring that the overarching traffic issues are addressed, but I think I've got my questions answered.
This year, we will be working on, I think, Southport, looking at it more holistically as things have progressed and from the Framework Plan days until now, some elements of that plan have materialized and some haven't. I think one of our biggest challenges in Southport is the really, there's there's not a lot of employment in Southport, particularly employment that with the wages that align with some of a lot of the real estate prices in in Southport is, you know, especially acute right now, but just overall. So we will be going at this and I know the council will be considering some of these matters when they do their strategic planning retreats next month. So there is some attention being paid to the matters you're raising, Commissioner Deanda.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot I was Chair for a second. Um. Vice Chair Lockhart.
I want to thank Commissioner Deanda for his questions because I had similar questions about the traffic impact and just to add a little bit more, you know, there is also the train crossing right there and so you know, just I really worry about late in the afternoon when trains pass frequently, traffic getting really backed up right there and you know, we have children walking to and from school in that area, so you know, the impact that it has with pedestrians, I just, I just want to flag that, I understand that this is likely out of the scope of what we're talking about tonight, but I just also want to to offer that up. I do also have questions about the grading in particular. I know the materials we were given outline that the Parks Department has to approve any permits for the regurgital heritage oak and there there were some criteria for what the applicant needs to do in terms of the heritage oak, but I didn't see anything in the report that specifically mentioned whether or not permits are in process or will be issued regarding the heritage oak.
Yeah, the applicant has been in contact with our Parks Department staff regarding getting the the needed tree permits and they'll need to secure those and pay any mitigation before they can start work on the site around any of the trees. As part of this development, they've all, the project is also subject to the Habitat Conservancy, Yellow Habitat Conservancy, and they have a fee for this 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 site, their fee was about a hundred and seventy-five, hundred eighty thousand dollars, if I recall, for mitigating for the loss of habitat for the species that are down there. So that'll not just the trees, but you know, other habitat aspects.
I had some additional questions, Chair Berliner, if that is okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I also had questions related to the impacts that this will have with pedestrians and bicyclists other people using the Branch Line Trail. The the discussion about air emissions seemed to speak more about the industrial emissions from the equipment being used. Is there consideration of the particular or the pollution created by dust? And then along those same lines related to dust, there are drought restrictions in place with the state, I understand that there are some exemptions for construction, but if if you could speak to or perhaps the applicant can speak to mitigations regarding water usage and the impacts to people using the trail.
Vice Chair, are you referring to like the more of the during construction?
Yes, during the actual, during the actual grading.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our engineering staff that are on the call tonight to give you some of the overview of some of the dust, dust prevention measures that we would typically apply to, you know, grading projects. If Candito or Eric can weigh in on how we address that during grading. Or or not. Yeah, so that'll be that those things are addressed during their grading.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Eric, yes, please.
I had a call with him. Yeah, I could chime in a little bit about that specifically, controlled dust pollution during grading phases. They would do things such as, you know, they put up physical barriers to prevent the dust from flowing out of the site or the the most effective one usually is making sure that they're watering the site, making sure that the dirt stays kind of watered, that'll weigh it down and prevent it getting picked up by the wind. That's typically the most effective one to keep dust. Was there any other concerns that you had?
I I understood that water would be a part of controlling the dust pollution, but just wondering if there's also consideration of the drought situation the state facing and, you know, are we ensuring that we're not using portable water for this or they're using recycled water or some something else to ensure that we're preserving our water resources?
Yeah, so typically the water would come from, they get they get permits and meters that they put on fire hydrants, that's typically where the water comes from. Or if they have their own water truck, they could bring their own water in, but they are being charged for the water that they use from the city. So it's not just free water that they're getting to do this. So that would that would incentivize them to use less of it.
And and just to clarify, the water from the hydrants, is that is that fresh portable water or is that recycled water? What is the source of that water?
Yeah, it's the same source of water that domestic water would come from.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, but that concludes my question.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lockhart. Next up, we have Commissioner Escobal.
No, those are really great questions, kind of in line of what I was thinking about. My question really is now about what what is the timing of this look like, right? Like, we're we're talking about this, so what what are citizens and residents are, what are we expected to see moving forward?
Perhaps when we go to public comment, we can ask the applicant to address their anticipated schedule for the project.
Okay, thank you, I'll go ahead and put my hand back down.
Thank you, Commissioner Escobal. Mr. Tilly, should we open up public comments so that the applicant can respond to some of these questions?
Yeah, so we should always take public comment, typically would start with the applicant and then if there's anyone else on the call that wishes to provide their their time, once we've, if we've completed any kind of clarifying questions from the commission initially, we can invite the applicant and in any other public comment that there may be.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna let Commissioner Hirsch talk and then I'll open it up for public comment. That sound good? All right, cool, Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Chair Berliner, I had a couple of questions for staff based off the staff presentation, but based off Mr. Tilly's direction, I'm happy to reserve those questions for staff after the public hearing.
Hey, then I'm going to open up the public hearing. Mr. Sinead.
Thank you, staff and to commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. I guess to go back and answer some of the previous commissioners' questions and add to Mr. Laffey's explanation in in terms of, I think, traffic being the first one. We've been going through this for a couple of years, I think, giving some background to the project when we developed Monticello, we had some agreements with the city to actually have a traffic light at the newly proposed entrance into this development. As we worked through this with city staff, we actually came to the conclusion that that wouldn't be the the best use for traffic along Jefferson, just in terms of timing. And in doing so, we actually added a second entrance into Gateway where there's already an existing traffic light. So in addition to that, we're a right in, right out only into the newly proposed development, which should hopefully, you know, reduce the amount of traffic or potential traffic buildup along Jefferson heading northbound. And then anybody that wants to leave the site would go up to Gateway to hit to then travel southbound. Going to, I think, Vice Chair Lockhart's questions in regards to some of the pedestrian items. So the branch trail, again, on the north side, we have the extension to Gateway. We're doing some improvements there, we're we'll actually provide a pedestrian light that help traffic flow, vehicular traffic flow for safety of pedestrian traffic over the branch trail from the south side and the north side. In regards to the grading, Mr. Rios had mentioned the the primary or the most effective way is to actually do dust control via water. Our plans are to actually start hopefully in in May, so typically that's still not a really dry season, you know, we anticipate trying to get most of the grading and actually paving done as fast as possible to then cover the site as as quickly as possible, which will then allow us to continue moving forward with the the foundation work throughout hopefully the upcoming wet season, so hopefully in, I would say four months, realistically, four to five months from construction start in May, we'll have the majority of the pavement down, anticipating that come October, when the rains do come back, we'll still be able to work the site for foundation. we'll still be able to work the site for foundation work and then get into framing uh, thereafter. Um, so there's three buildings technically broken down into a couple of different parts of seven sections in total. Uh, they're all four-story buildings. Um, in addition to the four-story residential buildings with one recreational building, that's a single story. In addition to a gym, that's a single story. Uh, our anticipated construction schedule right now is about twenty-sixth, uh, thirty months. Uh, obviously, there's a lot of variables that we are currently trying to work through in terms of supply chain. Um, and concrete, not that concrete's an issue down there, but uh, there's a lot of variables that we need to address as, as quickly as possible uh, and hopefully uh, see this through within the next, you know, two, two to two and a half years. Um, just going through my notes from what the commissioners asked. And I think that was all the questions that uh, the commissioners had, and if there's anything else, I'd love to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinet. Um, are there any other uh, public, uh, any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? It doesn't look like it, but I'm going to keep public comment open just in case uh, commissioners have more questions for Mr. Sinet. Oh, with that, um, do any commissioners have any other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Hirsch.
Thank you, Chair Berliner. Um, you know, I wanna start off by emphasizing that I agree with Commissioner Deanda's initial questions. As someone who lives uh, south of the proposed project, I, I have seen what traffic on Jefferson can be like. Um, at the same time, you know, any increase in housing, whatever point on Jefferson Boulevard will lead to increased uh, usage of Jefferson Boulevard. And so I'm not necessarily concerned by the traffic impact of future residents at this proposed site. I, I did notice in the staff report, though, that it mentioned that roughly one thousand truckloads will be needed to import earthwork to the site for the grading that we're focusing on tonight. And so I hope that Mr. Sinet, um, we can take away from the discussion that the commissioners have had. There is a real community concern about unnecessary traffic impact if there can be any mitigation. If in any way the grading trucks come, not during those particular heaviest times of day, the commute hours as support residents commute north, or the high school students go to the school and back. It, it is a heavily used road, and so any mitigation to traffic that, that could be done would certainly be appreciated by the community, I feel. Um, that said, I had two questions. Uh, the first question is for Mr. Laffey, um, and it goes to Vice Chair Lockhart's question about the heritage oak trees. Now, understanding that some of the oak trees on the site will have to be um, removed possibly for the grading process, could you describe, Mr. Laffey, what the city's mitigation process is with that situation?
Yeah, sure. Um, so the city has a tree preservation ordinance. And any, um, there's, there's two types of trees in that ordinance. There's, there are landmark trees and then there are uh, heritage trees. So for, for an oak tree, a heritage tree, um, there's a mitigation for whenever you, whenever you remove a, a tree over a certain size, I think it's fifty um, inches in circumference uh, of the, the trunk. And that mitigation um, has been three hundred and twenty-five dollars per inch in circumference um, or replanting um, one, one tree per inch. So that's been the standard mitigation. Um, ultimately, this is all up to our um, our Parks Department. Um, and they, they're the ones that issue the tree permit, which would have any kind of mitigation. Um, but that is, that's been the typical mitigation. Uh, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per inch measured in circumference for one tree um, per inch. And that one tree that they'd be having to um, plant would be on top of what would normally be required for the landscape development guidelines.
Thank you. And then um, my second question, and I'm not sure if it's for city staff or the applicant best positioned to answer. But as Vice Chair Lockhart mentioned, it looks like some grading will be done for the secondary driveway that goes towards Gateway Drive. It looks like they'll be quite close to the current uh, Clarksburg Branch Line Trail that's used by pedestrians and families and others. But I just wanted to, to make sure, in the proposed grading in front of us, would any of those heritage oak trees that form that sort of wall barrier between the path and the proposed project, are those trees proposed for removal in this grading, or is it other trees we're talking about?
So as part of the agenda um, item, you go to the attachment that has the improvement plans. There's a, a portion of that has the demolition. Um, if you go to page C six of the improvement plan, which is on page thirteen of the PDF, I don't know, PDF pages are the same for what you receive, but um, this is attachment. Wait, attachment, attachment four. So if you go to attachment four, um, and you scroll down um, to, where in the, in the bottom right where it says C, C six, uh, you'll see where, basically it shows what trees are proposed to be removed. Um, so for the, the area for the access driveway near Gateway, um, you'll see that almost all the existing trees are proposed to be still there. They're gonna be maintained. Uh, there's one tree that would need to be removed, that driveway. Um, but most of those trees would be in between the proposed driveway trail.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, no, I appreciate all that information. Uh, the only comments I have to share on this proposal. And again, understanding that the scope of today's action is simply the grading plan, I certainly appreciate thoroughness, the staff technical memo. I think it does a very thorough job analyzing the issues in front of us. Um, but beyond the grading, grading plan, I do just wanna say, I am glad to see additional multifamily housing projects proposed in Southport. You know, right now, we're seeing a lot of near million-dollar single-family homes in this neighborhood. And it's certainly pricing out a lot of folks, especially the younger generations. So I, I welcome a diversity of housing stock in our community. And I think especially the location of this particular site, um, along a major arterial, within walking distance of major shopping centers, within walking distance of the Barge Canal. Um, I think it's, it's a good addition to a good location. Now, that said, I do wish there had been more of a mixed-use component to this project, especially on the side facing Jefferson. I wish there had been more pedestrian uplift, um, especially given the location where it is again. But I, I do look forward to this project. I do find the staff analysis to be very thorough. And so I would move the staff recommended action at the appropriate time.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. And I just wanna say, I wanna echo um, all of the comments that um, my fellow commissioners have provided to city staff and to the applicant. Um, you guys have done a very thorough job of asking questions. I, like personally, I'm, I'm excited to see, as Commissioner Hirsch said, more, more housing in general. And it's, and it's nice to see housing south of the Barge. It's nice to see more apartments south of the Barge Canal rather than single-family homes. Cause it, it brings a diversity um, to that, to that, to those neighborhoods. And I think that, that's amazing. I am a little concerned about traffic, um, especially off Jefferson, but it sounds as though this project is trying to mitigate um, traffic impacts on Jefferson as much as possible. But um, you know, in order to have more housing, which we are going to see um, throughout, throughout the years, as when we see more housing, that means more cars unless, you know, everyone gets on a bike or gets on a scooter and goes, or uses public transit. So, um, with that, um, I would like to, oh, um, I guess Commissioner Hirsch has moved uh, staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Oh, do I need to close public comment?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm gonna close public comment. And with that, is there a second to, um, is there a second on Commissioner Hirsch's um, movement?
A little second, Commissioner Hirsch's movement?
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Sablon?
Hi.
Commissioner Deanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Escabel?
Hi.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Hi.
Commissioner Steiger?
Hi.
Vice Chair Lockhart?
Hi.
Chair Berliner?
Hi.
And with that, the motion passes. Uh, next up on the regular agenda, we have the public hearing regarding the uh, regarding proposed three-year time extension for River Oaks Besting Tentative Subdivision, map fifty-one thirty-nine, located at thirty-one thirty-one Village Parkway and fifteen twenty-five Wash, Lake Washington Boulevard. Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. I'll start over. Uh, good evening, uh, Chair Berliner and members of the commission. Uh, this item is a request for a three-year time extension for an existing uh, tentative map. Uh, the tentative map uh, is for a hundred and sixteen uh, residential lots in the River Oaks subdivision, which is part of New Florida State. Uh, the project is located both east and west of Village Parkway uh, and also uh, south of Lake Washington Boulevard. Um, the applicant has requested uh, the time extension. Uh, so they have additional time to work on the continuing, you know, the roundabout, which would be uh, at the intersection of Lake Washington and Village Parkway. Uh, as with so many things these days, uh, their work on this is in the way uh, of COVID. Um, and so that is the main driver for asking for additional time. Um, staff feels uh, that this is a reasonable request and is recommending approval. Um, if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. Also, we have staff from our engineering department here as well as the applicant. Should you have questions for him? Uh, that concludes my presentation at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Uh, does any, do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Um, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm seeing none. Uh, with that, um, I don't have, personally, I don't have a problem with the time extension. I, I, we, we need more housing, so anything we can do to, you know, fat, like, keep how, like, keep the possibility of building more housing alive, um, I'm going to support. Um, and I just wanna thank city staff for bringing this to us and hopefully uh, the applicant and the project will be able to move forward. Uh, with that, do I have a motion to, um, to move staff's recommendation?
I'll, I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Sablon. Uh, Vice Chair Lockhart, you have your hand raised?
I, I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Uh, and seconded by Vice Chair Lockhart. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Sablon?
Hi.
Commissioner Deanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Escabel?
Hi.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Hi.
Commissioner Steiger?
Hi.
Vice Chair Lockhart?
Hi.
Chair Berliner?
Hi. Hi, sorry. Um, the motion passes. Sorry, I have to go back up to top of my screen and it's not there. Uh, what is?
Good job. You're doing.
Thank you. What's next up on the agenda, everyone? Because my computer's frozen.
We are on part two A.
Okay.
Informal discussion.
Um, is there any informal discussion that? There we go, informal discussion. Um, Mr. Tilly, is there anything that you'd wanna discuss?
Um, just that we will be meeting again, our next regularly scheduled meeting, February third. Um, so we will be right back here in um, two weeks uh, with a couple of items um, for your consideration.
Thank you. Um, and, oh, Commissioner Sablon?
Oh, sorry, I was looking for the raise hand thing.
Okay.
I think if um, if there isn't anything further, I would, I'd ask that we adjourn in, in memory of Eliana Evelyn Escabel?
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree.
I second that, or third that.
Um, with that, oh, Vice Chair Lockhart?
I, I just wanted to offer my support and condolences to everyone who loved Eliana. Um, she attended one of our planning commission meetings, so she was a, a public servant on the short time that she spent on this earth. And I'm so grateful for the strength and courage of Commissioner Escabel to join us so soon. So, thank you.
Well, Mr. Tilly?
Um, if we, if there was a motion to adjourn um, under, under the, that honor, which is very richly deserved in my view, um, if there's a second on that, then um, that we can vote on that matter and the minutes will reflect it. Uh, we won't do a roll call vote on adjourning, but um, I think we should take that action um, and make it possible.
Okay. Um, I believe that there's, um, Commissioner Escabel?
Um, there's uh, you know, I just wanna make it public, we said that, you know, we, I appreciate you all and, and I appreciate all the support that you have provided. Uh, it's every parent's worst nightmare, but you know, you have people like you all. Um, you are there to support us, so I just, I just wanna thank you. Thank you, and um, thank you for adjourning in her memory tonight. You know, some of the dogs are creepy. Um, but just um, thank you for thinking about, thank you for our family.
Um, I think we had a motion and I think we had a second, so I, um, Madam Clerk, if you could know where.
We don't need to do a roll call for this one. I just think a voice vote would be sufficient to um, adjourn tonight um, in Eliana's honor.
Sister, hey, sister. Um, all those in favor of adjourning in memory of um, Elana? Oh, I'm so, I'm sorry, I'm really bad with names. Elana Evelyn Escabel, uh, say aye?
Aye.
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 I don't think anyone's gonna be opposed. So, um, with that, I hope everyone, do I need to ask if anyone's opposed? No, okay, cool.
They, they better not be.
Okay.
Tell me who you are.
Um, with that, I hope everyone has a good night and a good weekend. Thank you.
Just saying, thank, thank you all. Thank you so much. You all have been great, of course. We don't, we don't have to be on record.